Board of Directors special meeting of the Mercer Island School District to order. And the purpose is to conduct a study session for discussion about strategic planning. We are going to do public input. Do we have anyone here to do public input? No? Okay. So, oh, we could also, we don't need to adopt the agenda because this is a special meeting. So, what I do want to ask though for our item two, study sessions on strategic planning, is if we want to do our first two items up here on the dais, or if we want to just do everything at the table where we're going to have our strategic planning discussion. Any preference there? We're settled? Sit here for a couple of items and then move down there? Sound good? Okay. Okay. So, item two A, Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Stakeholder Group Participation. And we received an invitation to participate in a stakeholder group. We talked about this at our last special session as well, but we wanted to have it be in a more public, as in televised and recorded video, to discuss our participation in that stakeholder group. Do we have a pub, public input? Okay. So, we will pause that and listen to our, that's okay.
Thanks.
Come on up.
It does work this way?
Oh, I will see, I'll read our preamble. It's similar to the city. Oh, actually, our preamble's not on here. Basically, you have three minutes and this is a meeting in public. Thank you. I almost had it memorized, not really. Please limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if this concern is a group concern, and if desired, provide written documentation to the board secretary. Public comments that name or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parent or legal guardian. Thank you, Erin Vetterstein for that. Okay, go ahead.
Well, thank you. I'm Barat Cham. I've lived on the island for about 20 years. Thank you all for your service and thanks to all the school districts staff as well for their service. I'm here to talk to you about the counselors and some of the counselor funding. And I'd like to urge you folks to find ways to bridge the short-term gap and also work with the community at large to create a levy that's targeted at some, something that looks like counselor funding, perhaps a little bit, you know, more. But the community at large, along with the city and the school board should work together with the foundation to find what that levy should look like. Now, in addition to that, I want to talk to you folks about the importance of taking this opportunity to do more than just fund the exact counselor cuts that are on the table. Specifically, there's a lot of very interesting documents and studies from the National Board of, I think, Child Psychiatrists, the National PTA, and the Department of Homeland Security coming from the Secret Service, which sounds ominous, but really, it's all about counseling. It's about how you can proactively do things while counseling to prevent people, kids, from falling into a stage where they're distressed and might do dangerous things to themselves or to people of the community at large. The Homeland Security document is really focused on school security and uses the same principles that the Secret Service has, but applies it to counseling. And fascinatingly, I found myself doing this and in about two minutes, found something that was very serious in the school district that I've tried to have reach, you know, the correct authorities. And I don't want to get into the specifics of that. So, I, to summarize, this is an opportunity for us to look at how can our counseling for our school district, for our citizens, for our seniors, be better than what it is today and have fact-based ways of deciding how to make it better and engage the community with, should we make it better in the following ways? And if the community as a whole decides that, yeah, this makes sense, then have a targeted levy that includes the current counselors plus perhaps a little bit more based on what the experts like Cindy and Derek, Cindy is the leader in YFS and Derek who's the leader of the counselors and perhaps Chief Holmes or other people who are well-qualified decide after reading this material. So, I don't have this material right now, but I'll send it to you by email, including to Donna, the school superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Do we have any other public input? Okay. All right, we'll proceed then with item two A, discussion about the stakeholder group participation that's been proposed. Would anyone like to start? We also have an attachment on the agenda that I'm, just for the public's knowledge, that is a letter from Youth and Family Services to members of the city council regarding their take on the funding situation as well, if anyone wants to reference that.
If no one else wants to start, I'm happy to. I think that, first of all, I want to thank so many community members for sending us emails that the board received showing their support for Mercer Island Youth and Family Services and the school counseling program specifically. I don't want to speak for anyone else on the board, but just based on the priorities that we've had, I think this is, in fact, I know that maintaining and/or improving the model that we have for our counselors and the schools is a priority for all of us. I think that, you know, there's lots of different ways to do this and I really appreciate Jody Criss and Youth and Family Services and reaching out and starting this conversation in a really, really productive way. I really truly think it's not a question of if the schools, the school district is going to find a way to do this or the community, it's a question of how is it going to happen and what's the best way to do it. I think that there's a lot of agreement that the model that we have, that the counselors remain non-school district employees, is of a high priority. Obviously, anything's open for discussion, but the model that we have, we believe and have heard also that it's the gold standard in terms of being able to serve families, in terms of confidentiality for students, and the, obviously, the time and the training that the counselors have outside of the school day. It's also important to note that, you know, our students are in school for six hours out of a 24-hour period and, which is another reason why it should remain a community-based service. And yet, we know that we want this service to meet students where they are and as a collective, they're in school. So, I would absolutely support participating in a, in a work group to find a solution for the funding. I think looking broad and reaching, you know, reaching out high, I think is great. You know, we've talked about and the board supported a letter to the city council asking for a standalone levy, the benefits of which we talked about was that the, it would, having a sustaining, sustainable funding model that goes directly to where people want it to go is really important. And it takes, it takes more of the politics out of it as most of the community, or at least haven't heard really many opposed, but most of the community really supports these programs. And to benefit the city and the budget, it removes these items from the general budget, which would free up the money that the city puts in right now to use for other line items. What I think is really important for everyone to understand is, is the school district's going to make this happen. I mean, I believe that the school district's going to make sure that the counselors stay in the school. The question is, how is it going to happen? And what I mean by saying that again is, you know, if the school district pays for it, it won't necessarily be the gold standard model because they might have to become school district employees. Also, it means we don't have a rainy day fund in school funding. Every dollar we spend goes, you know, to teachers and in the classroom. And we have reserves, but there's a purpose to that, to be a sustainable, to have sustainable budgets. It isn't this extra money that we can then go choose to spend on whatever we want. So, it's all about choices. We can, as a board or in following our superintendent's lead, choose to fund the school counselors, but it means that we can't do everything, right? So, school class sizes could go up, seven-period day could be in jeopardy. I'm not saying that any of these things are going to happen, but it's about choices. And if we have to take the money and spend it for school counselors, then it's going to come from somewhere else already within our system because the state isn't going to give it to us. Or at least, at this point in time, they're not going to give it to us. So, that's why I at least strongly supported a standalone levy. And unless I hear a better idea, we'll continue to do so. And that's, and I, like I said, I would love to participate in a work group that we can figure this out. I think, I had one other point. I think it's really important, people have been very generous. I don't know in terms of numbers how high the donations have gone to the Youth and Family Services Foundation as a result of Proposition One not passing, but it's really important for sustainable funding models to not pay people, employees with one-time dollars. And that's what donations are. So, we need to create a long-term, sustainable funding model that, where we can stop, we can stop spending our time talking about how we're going to pay for it or who's going to pay for it and stop, start talking about improving the services we have, which are already fantastic, but improving the services we provide for our kids and our families.
Thank you, Deborah. I second everything you said, except for one item I just wanted to clarify. If we say we ended up funding 100%, I don't know where we'd get the money to do that, but without cutting things, as you said, but we could still have that money through our, in our local agreement, go to the city to maintain that highly-regarded policy of having them not be school district employees. So, they can still be employees of the city, but the funding would be transferred from us to the city in order to pay them. So, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Anyone else want to chime in before I go?
Sure. I'll echo what Deborah said. One, mental health counselors are important. We have a gold standard now. We'd like to maintain that and, as public input suggested, make it better. We'd like to highlight funding rules have changed significantly between 2008, when we used to fund this, and now with McCleary. Schools are constrained in how we spend money and flexibility has dramatically decreased. It's important to recognize that we did get an inflow of money from the state. While we got that inflow, basic education was very prescribed by the legislators and the money we got from the state goes towards that. In the state budget for health and counseling services, you know, so this includes nurses, psychologists, and mental health counselors. It's something like 0.06 per school, 400 students. So, if you do the multiplication, six schools times our students or so, you know, it ends up being maybe a grand total of .5 or .6 counselors for the entire district is what the state funds us. So, that's what would come out of the McCleary funding. That's what we just use to give teachers raises, to spend on basic education. It doesn't fully fund special ed and all those other things. So, then we can look at our local education maintenance and operations levy. This is our most flexible set of dollars for school funding beyond basic education. This actually shrunk 33%. We used to get $16 million a year in our local levy. It is down to $11 million. So, what the trade-off was, was we got more funding from the state and we lost our ability to raise the same amount in the local levy. So, now our local levy is much more constrained than it used to be before in terms of dollar amounts. So, we still fund things beyond basic education. This includes smaller class sizes, seven-period high school, potentially college and career readiness classes, if you think about computer science and STEM in this, additional supports in schools for paraprofessionals and special ed, further teacher pay incentives for cost of living needs in our area, professional development such as teacher coaching, diversity and equity training, struggling students, and special ed training. So, all that comes out of our local levy today and many, many things that could be at risk if we need to fund counselors. So, finally, education funding is capped. Schools are not legally allowed to run additional levies beyond the transportation levy, the technology and capital projects levy, our education and maintenance and operations levy, and our capital project bonds levy. We cannot run any more levies than we do today. We also maximize the levies we run today. And our community has voted on that and we appreciate that support very much. We believe that this community would fund mental health counselors as we proposed in a standalone, single-issue levy. It provides accountability. It provides sustainability, unlike donations, which you cannot count on each time. You know six years in advance that the levy will be coming and coming and coming. And it allows us to retain these professionals without their jobs being in jeopardy each year if donations don't come through. So, the city uniquely has the capability to run that single-issue levy. The schools cannot at the present time. It's not allowed. So, the school board and the city and our PTAs and WASDA, our school directors groups, have all advocated with state legislators for additional mental health counseling, counselor funding beyond the .6 or so FTE we get. So, if we really step into this a little bit deeper, it's unlikely this will be actioned in the 2019 session as there were major changes to education last year. This year, you can expect other things to be looked at, transportation, affordable housing, additional funding sources if need be, many, many other things still need to be looked at. So, I don't see education getting a big view at the state level in 2019. Now, maybe something happens in 2020. What will happen is probably be debated on for a while, funding sources identified. Once it's finally approved and considered, you know, I'd look at something like free kindergarten. It was staggered rollout. First, the poverty needy districts needed it, high, free, and reduced lunch districts, followed by the more wealthy districts. And so, you know, you're really looking at a five-to-six-year process before anything could be done in the mental health counselor arena from the state down. So, I think this is why I look back into March of this year when the school board suggested the letter for suggestion to the city that they run a single-issue levy focused on mental health and counselors for the community. And this really seems like a viable, sustainable, supportable, and accountable way of funding these. So, with that in mind, I think we've kind of talked about this in different groups privately over the last week or two weeks, so at PTAs, at principal meetings, at advocacy meetings. But I just wanted to highlight some of the things, at least I've talked about, in these groups in a more public forum so that everybody's on the same page, at least with my thoughts. As a board, I don't think we've fully come to this on it yet.
Director De Souza, I'd just like to acknowledge that all three of those meetings weren't private meetings, but they were all open to the public in public, not necessarily well-attended, but they were all public, as well as one was videoed. So, just to make sure that we're not private.
Fair enough. Thank you for that. Yeah. Thank you for that, yes. So, that's where I stand on, or sit on this right now. I think we should participate in a community forum around this. I do think right now the forum is a little bit narrow if it's just the Youth and Family Services Foundation. It probably needs to include city members, city council members as well. And I think, thinking about this as donations, probably isn't as, isn't as helpful a sustainable mechanism. So, that's what I'll say for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll go next. Thank you. I didn't really prepare talks because I think we discussed this at length at our last meeting, which is on videotape. So, I encourage people who sent us emails to go watch that. But I do appreciate those emails and I believe the importance and priority of the mental health counselors of all the emails we received, I've seen that across the board here in terms of us as a priority. It is a best practice for social-emotional learning, curbing alcohol and drug abuse, suicide prevention, and minimizing the risk of community and school violence. So, towards that end, it is a huge priority. And it's been a priority of this board for quite a while. We, as mentioned, we had the March 22 letter, which encouraged a standalone levy. I'd say 15 months prior to that, there was a similar discussion that we brought up and talked about at length. This was brought up, I think, both times, perhaps anticipating a much larger and perhaps grander levy being asked. And that's kind of why, at least for myself, bringing that up was trying to be more of a targeted, specific levy, recognizing that if one goes to, I think it's MSRC, Municipal Research for Cities of Washington, they actually publish all the passage rates of all the levies that are floated with cities and counties. And if you look at that, targeted, specific levies have, I'd say, orders of magnitude greater chance of passing than just an overall levy lift, which I interpret as taxpayers appreciate voting for things, they know where the money is specifically targeted, so fire, parks, mental health, et cetera. So, I think that data supported our letter. I am very appreciative of MIYFS Foundation reaching out to us and would personally love to participate and very much want the school board to participate. I think the public's rejection of Proposition One should never be interpreted as the public not willing to support mental health counseling. I think if there was ever a levy brought before our residents, they would support that very broadly. But as much as the board took a position on what we thought was both an accountable and sustainable solution, that also preserved education, limited education dollars, and would likely be supported, I think it's best practice for us to maybe take a step back and participate in the foundation's stakeholder group with kind of open minds to see what other solutions there are out there. So, because before going out for another vote, I think that's going to be demanded by the public to look at all different options. I think if, with the 30 or so people that shared emails with us, if I'm standing out in the audience, I really don't care who funds this. I want this funded. And I get the frustration. I understand that. I think it's a process, though, and we needed, the city needed to hear what the result was for Prop One. The next situation is we need to hear from the city what their budget priorities are. And I believe tomorrow, they're adopting that budget. They've also mentioned that they're thinking of doing $1.2 million of additional cuts. So, Director De Souza mentioned the city participating in this. I think we do need to know what the actual cuts are in total in order for our group to come in to find out how big of Band-Aid it needs to be. But, so, I was kind of explaining that to people who are just looking in. They don't care who funds it. They just want to make sure it's funded. But I just wanted to explain that process so that people can appreciate that timeline. People in this community very much appreciate the mental health counselors we have. And for them to continue to be kind of on the chopping block, we risk losing them via attrition. And so, it's very important for those people to feel valued and feel like they've got a long enough runway. And should there ever be a cut made, which I hope there wouldn't ever be, and I don't anticipate there, it's going to be very difficult to step up the level of service because that would become the new norm. Just a couple more comments would be, regardless of the solution, if it was to be a standalone levy, there would need to be language in there. I would think to exempt low-income seniors, there would need to be language in there that encourages our city and school district to apply for the Best Starts for Kids funding, that would ratchet down the amount of levy money collected if the community was fortunate enough to receive some of those dollars. And towards that end, I was happy to hear from Assistant Superintendent Rundle that he is working with the Director of MIYFS to actually, it sounded like, submit an out-of-cycle grant application. So, that's super important, especially to the tax-sensitive people and to make sure that we're not being doubly taxed. And lastly, just, it would be really nice if we could preserve education dollars for education, especially when we know this community will support best practices for mental health counseling. I was talking to some people in Anacortes. Anacortes, their mental health counselors are funded by the county and by the community hospital taxing district. Okay? So, they're not using their education dollars for that. Similarly, Seattle just passed, I think for the 24th year, they renewed it four times, their FEP, Family Education and Preschool. It's a city levy that goes towards preschool funding, mental health counseling, actually now two years of community college for residents. And so, there is precedence for such an ask. So, thank you.
Thank you. Brian, anything to add there?
Do I have anything to add? Yes, it, the discussion has returned me to several rabbit holes that I've been on over the last year. So, I was happy to dig up all of that paperwork. So, yeah, there's a, it's an interesting topic, an interesting debate, and it's a dialogue that I think it's important that the school district participate in. How we participate in that dialogue, I think, is going to be really important. And that's, I think, where the five of us come in with input from the superintendent. I think our interaction in this dialogue needs to be intentional and direct, understanding that this is not our wheelhouse. This is a city agency. It is a city budget. And really, they are the ones ultimately that need to make the decisions on this. So, I'm very keen that when we headed into our agenda, our Lincoln session with the city council, included in that packet, along with packets that went out to the community, was was very specific language of what proposition was, one was to uphold, what it was to fund, and what would be lost in a very specific order if it failed. Now, whether that was communicated well enough to the citizens for them to truly understand, it was mapped out, and it is in our board packet for that evening of our Lincoln session with the city council, and it was sent out through the city council messages. I also understand that as far as Youth and Family Services, mental health counselors in our schools are concerned. And that's important because this is where we specifically have this interlocal agreement. In that area, from what I understand, these cuts were specifically made through the direction of Youth and Family Services, and Cindy Goodwin as their executive director, understanding that holistically, looking at their organization, looking at all of the amazing things that they do and their outreach into the community, that these cuts, as, as much as they didn't want to have to make cuts, these were the places where it was found or decided that they were going to be able to have the most impactful use of the remaining funds for the organization. So, I want to be sensitive to what a difficult decision that must have been for Cindy and the administration of Youth and Family Services, and understand that they came to that not arbitrarily, but through thoughtful deliberation. So, I want to honor that on their behalf. Also, while the city is facing a fiscal cliff, so is the school district. So, in our four-year projection, and we don't have a crystal ball, but in our initial four-year projection that we received from Director Bergstrom, sorry, hi, in the initial projection for years, we were $1.2 to $1.7 million in debt. Now, that has corrected through some deep digging through our superintendent and her administrative team to shore up our finances within our district, which now, at the end of four years, we are around $900,000 left in our fund balance. Currently, if you'll help me out, how much is currently in our fund balance?
Six point seven million.
Six point seven million. So, at the end of four years, in our projections, which is not easy to project, with a really conservative projection of that six million plus, we have just under a million dollars left. So, as we move into year five and year six, there is no money left in the school district. So, we are five years, six years out from our own fiscal cliff. And so, we need to shore up our budgets in-house and make sure that we have sustainable funding. As I go back, back in August, the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction released a form called "The Potential Risk Factors to Compensation Sustainability." And in that, it listed that, according to the 2017-18 actual salaries, Mercer Island averaged $81,667,000 as an average salary, which was six percent different from the 2018-19 salary allocation as recommended, which would have been around $76,954. So, we are paying over, on average, over the state allocation of what we received from state funds in FTE to fund our district. That was before we gave a very generous bump-up in salary and approved that through the bargaining over the summer, which was somewhere around a fifteen-ish percent increase. So, where that now establishes us over the state allocation for FTE and funding, would be interesting to see what that numbers. And I searched OSBI to see if they've updated this particular chart for risk factors, and they haven't. But I want us to keep in mind that while, before the increases, we were paying six percent above the state average allocation, and we also lost 34% of our leveraging capacity for enrichment enhancement programs, which also include art teachers in our elementary schools, the Spanish language program, as well as other enrichments enhancements. And then, we're looking at that five-year, six-year projection, things next year are going to start getting really, really tight for the school district. So, with all of that in mind, how do we manage sustaining these current programs and our interlocal agreements? I pulled those up, we have eleven interlocal agreements currently that I could find. Of those, and I listed them in my own order, kind of how they made sense, there's counseling services, our school resource officer, let's not forget that the city provides a school resource officer at our high school, school bus safety cameras, aid services at the high school football games, those are emergency services through the fire department, school impact fees, which are collected through the city on our behalf, fuel purchasing, operations of Mary Wake Pool, which has been talked about as funding being pulled from that as well in that interlocal agreement, and whether or not the school district would be providing a city pool service, or whether it'd be worth it to keep that building open for our athletics department. Then, certain school districts' sports fields for use, maintenance, and improvements, the high school stadium and other facilities, improvements, scheduling, use, and operation, improvements to Island Crest Park, the baseball field, and South Mercer playfields. So, if the city does move forward with an additional $1.2 million in cuts over what is currently projected, it's going to have an impact on all of those interlocal agreements as well, I would assume. So, entering into a dialogue, well, I think it's going to be really important to work with Youth and Family Services Foundation, the knowledge base that we have from our own schools foundation, and all of our amazing funds throughout the island, the Mercer Island Fund, our associations, our boosters, all of those groups together, to fill the gap in the meantime, which is what they have done, while looking at how we're all going to shore up our systems with the limited tax dollars that we have in our respective government agencies, in order to provide a level of service. And with that said, when the voters voted down Proposition 1, whether or not overwhelmingly they were aware that this had been very clearly marked out where these cuts were going to start, beginning with next year, that, that was the message that got sent. And there, there's no option when you fill in your bubble on your ballot, you know, I vote yes or no, there's no write-in section that says why. So, and we don't have a crystal ball, we can't assume why anyone voted the specific way they did. All we know is the impact. And when it comes to the work we do, we have to be aware of the message that we're sending, and we have to own the impact and where it sits. So, I think we should definitely put forth individuals to participate in a stakeholder group, if nothing else but to provide factual information of where the school district is right now with our budgets and our projections. I wouldn't want to do that unless our partners in the city government were there as well. And I want to be very aware of our superintendent's time, because she is our subject matter expert. We would want her sitting at that table, delivering that information. But this is a huge ask, to ask of her to spend additional time in this additional stakeholder group, outside of the amazing work that she is already doing, along with our administrative team. So, yes, I think it's going to take stakeholder groups, I think the district has a voice at that table. But I think the owners of that stakeholder group really are the city, the city council and the city manager, Youth and Family Services as a department of the city, and also joining the partner of the Youth and Family Services Foundation, who is an integral partner. And just as we're looking at our budgets as a school district, we want our foundations and associations and our stakeholders with us on that. And I think absolutely, I think it's great that the Youth and Family Services Foundation is leading that charge to pull that stakeholder group together. I just want to make sure that our involvement in that is intentional, honors our relationship and our boundary as a school district versus the city, and keeping in mind that the next five years, six years, are going to be very, very interesting for both government agencies as we try to figure out what our new normal is.
Thank you. I agree with all that was stated and support us meeting with the stakeholder group. And at our last meeting, we talked about that it's really about the process of how the stakeholder group is coming together. We, it's not, it wasn't an issue of whether we would participate, it's really how. Because we're a public entity, an elected board, we have to meet in public and be transparent about our meetings. And so, this group felt that even if we were to send just two people, we needed to have a few requirements for, or suggestions for the group meeting. And as you've heard, having city council present, you know, the city manager and a council member or more, would be ideal, not just Cindy Goodwin from the city, although she is an important part of this process as well. But that as another elected board, or elected body, that they should have representation too, not in the least of which, because they are the, the body that governs the Youth and Family Services, they are the ones who've been paying the majority of the expenses for this wonderful service partnership, and that because, as, as was also mentioned, they have the levy capacity that the school district does not. So, some other suggestions were to have the meeting be recorded so that it could be available to the public, to have it be open to the public, for people to come if they so wished, even if they were not on the stakeholder list. And so, those were some, some of the things that we had talked about in the last meeting. I agree with what Director Jorgensen said about going in with an open mind into these discussions, even though we've just laid out all the reasons why we wouldn't be able to shoulder the full responsibility in the short term, or the, especially in the long term, and that we are looking to the community to help with this. I appreciated that the Youth and Family Services Foundation letter that was, we have a copy of, that states that they don't believe they have the ability to raise the kind of money that would fill, fully fill the gap that the city budget would be leaving. And that really donations, while wonderful, and I, and I think might help with some short-term gaps, we need something that is more fair and sustainable for the long term, and that we can count on, and not have this issue, which has been going on for years, where every, two years, we're asking for where's the money going to come from. And so, unfortunately, Proposition 1 didn't pass. Coming into, bringing bodies together is a great idea to brainstorm. As we've mentioned, the idea of a standalone levy may not be the only possibility out there, so going in with an open mind is great. The other thing, I think that was all I had. And then, I wanted to get Donna's input, and then we can talk about whether we want to send one, two, or have our whole board be invited to a stakeholder meeting, in which case, we would need to publicize it as a public meeting for the five of us. But we could send two, up to two, without doing that. Donna, would you like to give your input?
I think that everything has been well said, so I don't have really a lot to add. Thank you, Director Janine Upton, for acknowledging the various interlocal agreements that we do have. We have also been looking at those closely as to how each one of those could impact the district in how, and we, could we continue those services? So, that is something that is definitely on our radar. And any conversation, of course, that involves the well-being of our students, I am more than happy to participate in.
Thank you. Okay. So, I'm open to comments about how many people we send. I think there's a lot of enthusiasm for participating in this group. And so, and I also know that Jody Chris, who started the whole email process, that while there is a set of meetings still possible for this week, that she may add some meeting times based on the outcome of this meeting to include our participation. So, I'm hearing that we want to participate. Any comments about one, two, or five? Go ahead.
Do we know the timing of the meetings at all yet?
There's one proposed for tomorrow at 10:30, I think 10:30 to 12:30, and one on Thursday at 8:30 to 10:30.
And do we know if the city will be present at that?
That's what I do not know. Were you able to talk to anybody about that?
I have, I have not received any information on whether there will be, other than, as noted Cindy Goodwin, whether there will be any city council members there. But Jody Chris is here, so if we would like to pose that question to her, she might have further information of any of them.
That would be great. Would you like, mind using a microphone? Could we give her a microphone?
Thanks, Jody. We began our thinking about this process without inviting the city council, sort of to think about getting...
Hang on just a second, we want to make sure the microphone's on.
Okay, they're on, use the...
Lift that one, Jody.
Thank you, Jody.
So, in our thinking, we began this process trying to identify stakeholder groups that had not been directly involved in the Proposition 1 proposal and outcome, and thinking that we could lay a foundation for getting various views across the stakeholders who are benefited specifically by the counselors, but also more broadly for other mental health services. We, as the foundation, are not exclusively focused on getting sustainable funding for the counselors. We have a responsibility for taking the department's direction on what they believe the best mix of social services is to best, to the best advantage of our community. We're not an operational board, we're a fundraising board. We feel that we can be of good help in bringing the community together, given that we do offer a wide array of very broad-based, popular services. A lot of the stakeholder invitations that we have extended are not necessarily requests for money, it's requests for advocacy help, because our foundation database itself and the reach that we have is, is not as robust as, say, the entire school district database or the entire city database, which we, as a foundation, don't have access necessarily to those channels. So, so our thinking was to begin a process to just identify the spectrum of stakeholders that might have a say and begin a discussion. So, we didn't invite the city. I have since had some conversations with people at the city, and I don't think they're adverse to participating either. So, we have a couple of options. We can proceed on the timetable as a smaller group without involving the public entities that are bound by legal restrictions on your participation, and have a table-setting meeting this week. And we can look for an opportunity to include the school board and the city council, either in full or in part, under, you know, the legal restrictions on which you operate. I think my preference would be just getting how close we are to the holidays and giving my personal eagerness to get this process started, is to keep the date that we have on the table tomorrow, and if you want to designate two people because you believe that that's fine to come just to be a listener or a participant in the meeting, that would be fine. If you would prefer to wait for a more formal invitation where the city council and you are participating collectively, either as a whole or in part, that's also okay. This is, this is, this is not a one-and-done issue. This is going to be an extended public process where it really is advocacy, consensus-building, a lot of policy, questions need to be answered, some financial forecasting has to be done. And, you know, hopefully, we can come together for a long-term sustainability discussion and solution. And I'm in complete agreement that the donation model isn't where we're going, and there's a lot of models where I think we're not going to achieve real sustainability. So, there has to be some thoughtful conversations, and I'm sure there's many perspectives I haven't heard yet in my silo, and I think that's true of all the silos, and just to get a discussion started. So, with that being said, I think my intent would be to, for the people who are RSVP that they're available tomorrow, perhaps start that discussion, and we would welcome the participation of a subset of you, not holding that as a public meeting, but we are open to further public meetings. meeting, but we are open to further public meetings, you know, hopefully on a reasonable timetable to get this thing really started.
Thank you. Okay, comments?
So just talking about our participation. Yes, we need to make sure everything we do is legal, but also, I think, from a, if this comes to an election or a ballot measure, I think it needs to be beyond legal. It needs to be very good optics, too. So I would emphasize having these things in the public, having them televised if possible, because I think the public is vested and wants to see how this is put together. I would, I hesitate to say this, but I think meeting tomorrow before the city has adopted their budget might kind of be putting the carton front of the horse, because I think those cuts were laid out, but they were laid out by staff. And tomorrow is the opportunity for public input to be provided to the city council to, for them to adopt their budget, and for us to step in before they do that to Brian's point, kind of putting us in front of that. Yeah. And then I think the other thing would be, it'd be interesting to see a show of hands, who, if, if everybody's interested in participating, or if other people, you know, there's some assumptions there.
Yeah, I think that that comes following the, whether we think we should participate in tomorrow's meeting without city council and before the budget. So, any other comments on that first?
When it comes to decision-making or any of that part of collaboration, I think we should be, we should slow down and be really deliberate about that, intentional. Although I'm also a really big proponent of us being community-forward, engaging as a board and as an administration, and not allowing other people to tell our story for us. That's one of my big things. Let us tell our story. And there's some misinformation about, out there floating around as to what the school board has done or hasn't done, or has suggested, or what we're able to do. So I think even if we just send one or two representatives that are able to add some clarifying information without necessarily making suggestions, and certainly not agreeing to anything, but just being able to provide clarity around some of those questions, I think would be helpful. And then I forgot to mention, we also do have the option of activating our school board Policy 1007P, which is the City Council School Board Partnership Committee policy that we have very clearly written out of how we can connect individuals from our board with specific individuals elected from or appointed from the city council to work very specifically and deliberately on behalf of both agencies. So I think as we head down the road towards collaboration, it might be a really good opportunity to engage the city council in a very intentional way with transparency.
And just to add some information to the mix is Donna and I will be having our leadership meeting with the city manager and mayor on Thursday morning.
Also, just one other point of clarity on that leadership meeting, that is, there's a, there's a president, mayor, superintendent, city manager leadership meeting. The policy Brian was talking about...
Right, but we could bring that up there, is what I meant.
Expands it a little bit bigger, but just to be clear, it's not transparent, and it's not public, it's not televised, it's behind closed doors. So I don't, I don't really think that's, that's a viable option at this point in time, simply because we're at a stage now where this is of huge interest to the community, huge interest to the city council, huge interest to the school board, as well as the people involved with these jobs. So I think the options would be, as suggested, one is, I appreciate Brian's suggestion to be, be city-forward and engage. I do think it might be okay for one or two board members to attend, or even perhaps just the superintendent to attend at the meeting tomorrow to provide facts and clarification where needed. I would suggest perhaps a linkage between the city council and the school board to talk about this issue in further depth, and that might be something to bring up at the leadership meeting, if that's an opportunity. I think that allows us to participate...
I agree.
...with the decision-makers on that side, if, if there's an opportunity there to get some clarity. But I will agree with Brian that I am, I'm open to at least a discussion amongst the board about one or two, two members preferably going to the meeting tomorrow.
Deborah?
I agree. I can make it easy. I just can't get away during daytime meetings right now with my schedule. I would love to participate, but I can't do that. So if that's when they are, you guys can fight amongst you four. With, I agree, I want for the board to have a presence. I think it's crucial that the city has a presence. What I worry about, I might get in trouble for this, but I'll say it anyways, what I worry about is, is we've been accused of this not being a priority because it's not in our budget by the, by city council members. And I don't want this to be a political issue like it was made a political issue in Proposition 1. This is about our kids and our community, and they need to be served. I worry that if this, if school board is involved, that it can be, it would be more of a political process rather than community groups, you know, we're not really a community group. Rather than community groups going to our city council members who make the funding decisions, might be more effective. And if that's the case, I would, that's my concern. So I don't know how it's going to play out. I don't know where this group is going to go in terms of recommendations. I don't know that anyone does. But I worry that even if we're just members of the group, that it's going to, there's already so much misinformation out there about why isn't the school board proposing a levy. I think we've answered that tonight, but I think we've answered it before, and it still doesn't seem to be understood. So that's, that's just my big concern. And I, I wish we could take, I mean, not that we need to take the lead, but I wish we could be a leader in this. And I can confidently say that if we need to make budget decisions within our own budget, we will make the right ones, but I'm hoping it doesn't get to that. I'm hoping that our community can come together and encourage our city council to create a sustainable funding model. And we've requested it as a board, we endorsed Proposition 1, and I worry that, I worry that us being too involved will make it a bit of a political scapegoat, and I don't want to see that happen.
I'm just imagining a meeting where something that is in our budget gets discussed by community stakeholders and city council and us not being there, and that feels really weird. So I'm thinking unless we hear that there's going to be a city council representative and/or the city manager available at that meeting tomorrow, that we shouldn't participate yet, but that we should give our full support for you to discuss it without us there. I appreciate that Jody Chris is here tonight and that she's heard it and could relay our message, but if we, if we do find out that there can be representation, we could match that tomorrow. Does that sound fair? Because I do think that is the stipulation that we need to follow, that there be city representation beyond just Cindy Goodwin, and that we would want to eagerly participate in the next session, is what I'm hearing from all of you.
I agree with that, but I also think that because, I think having a school district employee, whether it's Donna or someone she chooses to ask to go, I think it would, I think it would be totally appropriate, and I think it's her decision, not ours, but would be totally appropriate to be present at the meeting tomorrow, who can provide that information and isn't part of the political body.
Donna, do you have any further comment on that?
However, recognizing that some of these solutions are for the elected leaders to make, which are putting a board resolution together or a council resolution together for a levy.
We could certainly have staff there to answer any questions, whether they're budgetary questions or specific to parameters by which the school district can go out for levies. We certainly have checked calendars and will be able to have someone available to answer those questions and any other things that might be specific to school district, particularly budgeting, I think might be some of the, the big questions. I do believe that Penny Yantis, Executive Director for the Mercer Allen Schools Foundation, has already responded that she is interested in attending and is able to attend. And of course, we work directly with our schools foundation in fundraising, so that voice will be there. But we could certainly have someone go to answer any of those questions that might need answering.
Okay, and then, so that's one scenario, and then another one would be if there were city council representation tomorrow available. Donna and Ralph and I have a meeting scheduled at 11:00 AM tomorrow, which we could forego in order to participate. But I know Director Duzza, you were very interested in participating as well. Does that time work for you tomorrow, 10:30?
It does, but if you already have a group that's ready to go, I can step aside.
Director Jorgensen, are you...
Yeah.
Okay. So does that sound fair, Donna, if there's represent, matching representation that the three of us could attend tomorrow? So we'll wait to hear. Okay? Any other comments?
Yeah, may I just add some clarification? I have watched certain council meetings where they mention like the pool or the SRO or the fields in terms of those interlocal agreements. I recall back in 2008, 2007 timeframe when there was severe school funding issues, the city and the school district met and discussed synergies, and it was found out that the city just can't hand money to the school district. It has to be a one-for-one type of contribution. So I just hope people don't take away that the city is just giving the school district $130,000 for pool operations just for being a nice guy or Earl. The community is greatly served by the school district operating a public pool. And similar thing with the field maintenance. Yes, I believe the city maintains the South Mercer playfields, but the city in return for lawn mowing, et cetera, does collect the user fees for all the sports groups, softball, baseball, soccer, which I think is a significant amount of money. So it is a one-for-one type of contribu- contribution. It's not, it's not a handout to the city or to the school district. And likewise, mental health is not education, and that's where they arrived at contributing to this. So just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Brian?
If I may, I feel like I came out pretty harsh at the gates on this one. And I do want to say that obviously I'm very passionate about mental health and access to these social services. And so for our students who are listening, to bring that student voice forward, the reason that we're battling over this and the reason ultimately that our community is going to support this is because we believe in helping the most vulnerable among us, whether it be students, whether it be seniors, whether it be struggling families, couples, people dealing with dependencies or addictions. And so I pulled this up as a final thing. In lieu of mental health, and while we're discussing this, for anybody who's watching or listening, if you or you know, you yourself or know of anyone who is struggling right now with mental health issues, please don't hesitate to call the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline at 1-800-273-8255. And while we debate these things in our community back and forth, always remember that we, as a community and how we interconnect with each other, our relationships are what are most important, and we cannot allow politics to get in the way of the relationships that bind our communities together. That is where our strength is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to our next item, which is reflections of our WASDA conference. The annual conference was November 15 through 17, or 18, and we, we were all present, which is really fantastic. And this is our chance to provide reflections about some of the things we learned, the takeaways. So who would like to start?
Should we move down to the table?
Oh, yes, we could do that, absolutely. So we're going to move into the space in the center to have our next, the rest of our meeting.
Yeah. There's...
Need to pull maybe one more microphone out here.
Who is the M box? Too big. It wasn't even with the full, but I was putting...
I was chopping it up again.
And like that.
And like...
It's better than the old.
Okay, you ready to get started? And do I have a volunteer to begin on their reflections?
I'll start us off.
Thank you, Donna.
First of all, thank you to all of the board directors for attending. I think it's a great opportunity for us to grow and learn, certainly individually and as a governance team as well. Several of the sessions that I went to were either an affirmation of the work that we've been engaged in, but there were some aha moments that of course then alleviate some of the frustration in knowing that we're not the only ones that are feeling these unknowing pieces out there, particularly when it comes to budget. I think the session that sounded the most dry in the description, but that actually did give me several aha moments, and apparently this group has not presented at the WASDA conference before, was the state auditor. And a lot of questions were asked, particularly by superintendents in that meeting as to process and procedures. And it was certainly for me, one of the affirmations of we are not the only ones who are struggling with what are these processes and procedures going to be, because it is also very, very new. So I think that was a big aha for me.
Thank you.
I'll speak next. I focused on social emotional learning and I also attended a couple of the legislative priorities panels that, one was talking about what happened in the last session and one was talking about what was going forward. And I feel like we were, I understood so much of it because of the education that we've been given here from Director Bergstrom and Superintendent Koloski. So there were really a lot of surprises there. Two of the highlights for the social emotional learning pieces, one was Christian Moore, who's the founder of Why Try? And I'd had some experience with his program in helping motivate at-risk students when I was a student teacher. And it was great to see him speak. He was the most entertaining speaker for an afternoon session especially that I had ever seen. He was like a stand-up comedian and he had had a really rough childhood and so he never expected to even go to college, but he has a master's. And he was talking about, he works in with youth as a therapist and he does a lot of curriculum and writing books. And his latest book is about resilience, that resilience can be taught, four keys to unleashing it. And he did a really great background on that, which I thought was really helpful. I also got to see the, one of the co-founders of Character Strong that's being used in a couple of our schools, John Norland. And he talks about infusing social emotional learning and character into your school's daily fabric. That was the title of his session. And he was also an excellent presenter and it was really great to hear more about this program. I would love to see more of it in our schools too. So I think it's, it's a really strong program for helping promote kindness. It's one of the major policies of that, of that program. So those were the highlights for me.
So Tracy, if you'll help me out here.
Oh, yes.
Nice webby. We picked that up from the Character Strong workshop, two separate workshops, but we came together on that. That was a really great presentation. I sat in on the Ordin School District presentation on using the pillars and leverage of the school board to bring your community together and really provide effective governance for school districts. And while they're a pretty small school district, I really love the passion that they expressed and how they function as a board. And one of the overarching things that they just kept coming back to was a question of why. Why are we here? Why are we doing the things that we're doing? And what do we do? And for them, that big moment was we, we educate children. We save lives is a story that their superintendent told of, you've probably heard it before. There's a surgeon being followed by a reporter. It's a big interview and the reporter gets to spend the whole day following the surgeon. And so they're in pre-surgery, they have some coffee and they're talking. And as they're heading towards the surgical theater, the surgeon says, give me just a moment. And he steps over to speak to a custodian and they chat for several minutes. And they get done, they shake hands and the surgeon heads off. He says, you know, I've got to scrub in and I'll talk to you in a minute. And the reporter goes over to the custodian and says, wow, you two talked for a long time. And the custodian said, yeah, yeah, we did, we do every day. And he says, wow, that must be really important. So, so what do you do here? And the custodian said, we save lives. And it really talked about how the overarching mission and vision and values set in the overarching administration has to filter down to every person within your organization so that when we are developing our mission and vision and statement and moving forward, we should be able to go to any member of our district and say, what do you do? We educate children. We save lives. And I love that. And they just kept coming back to that time and time again. And while she kept saying, well, I always go back to we save lives because of the story, I happen to believe that through education and equal access to quality education, we are saving lives. So that was really powerful to me. One of our lunches, we got to hear a group of leaders talk about tribal school district consultation and communication, which is something that I hadn't really heard about. And I was curious, so I followed them into their breakout session and began learning a whole lot about tribal school district consultation and some of the new laws that are coming down through the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA Act. And I know that we'll be heading into, I think, some curriculum review and some things around that a little bit later in the year, late winter, early spring maybe. So I might be bringing some of that knowledge back around. We have such an amazing opportunity to be so close to the Muckleshoot people who fished in Lake Washington, as well as the Duamish people who are not necessarily federally recognized. But I know some of our schools go to visit the Duamish longhouses each year as a part of their curriculum, especially in third grade. So I don't know, it seems like an opportunity maybe for some outreach and to build some relationships in our regional community. But as is always said, we are lucky enough, we can do anything in the school district. We just can't do everything, so I keep that in mind. And then, yeah, it was really fun to connect again with delegates as we went through and cleaned up bylaws. No major changes happened with the bylaws, but things were renumbered and kind of reorganized into a way that makes more sense. And I'm very happy that WASDA overwhelmingly now has a specific category for student safety and comprehensive school safety, which has never been there before. So thanks to the, our work that has been very intentional in our school district over the last year, our partnership with Issaquah and Bellevue and other surrounding school districts, I think we just moved the needle in a pretty big way at the state level, so. I had a great time, thank you. And thank you all for being there.
So I think I'll just talk about one. I think the one I found interesting was Chris Superintendent, State Superintendent Chris Reichardt's team came and presented kind of a focus on educational improvements, merging state and local priorities. So it sent out that big survey that I think every one of us took. It looked like 30,000 people responded to it, which was pretty impressive. And they kind of gave a view at the state level of where they think education is going. One thing that struck me was the vision. All students prepared for post-secondary pathways, careers and civic engagement. So I think we've always had this issue about how do we talk about college versus other things people could go into? I think they captured that well with secondary pathways and careers. And interestingly, they also captured civic engagement well. And that, that seemed a very nice thing for government to be doing. They, they talked about some of the key drivers that they were going to be invested in. And that also was interesting. Core instruction for everyone, so I think this comes back to basic education as defined by the legislature. Comprehensive supports for all. This would include things like nurses, middle school counselors, family engagement coordinators, mental health and suicide prevention, and then even expanding regional school safety centers. So a large amount of work going on on that. Not quite sure how it's funded yet, but, but they are thinking about it. Expanded learning for all, so this would include CTE and other courses like that. Multiple pathways for all. This is again, thinking about college versus career pathways for students. And then systems improvements around health and safety certainly has come to light, both from a mental health counselor as well as school safety. And then finally, dual language for all. I didn't, I didn't realize dual language for everyone had become a state priority. So that was, that was also very interesting that we're ahead of the curve, especially looking at our trip visit to Lakewood where the, the, the goals for the Spanish immersion program were presented to us. And I was, I found them super, super compelling, super interesting to finally see some educator-focused goals around what we expect of our students coming out of the fifth grade in terms of being, you know, somewhat fluent in, I guess maybe fluent is the wrong word, but, but being educated in a language that they can be dropped in the middle of a city and maybe find their way to somebody, somewhere reasonable and get some food. So, and be able to understand a lot of what is going on around them, though they may not be able to communicate. So I kind of get, get a lot of that. I think that's, that's actually great for a fifth grader. So it really aligned to see what the state goals are and kind of what we're trying to achieve seemed pretty strongly correlated. I'll, I'll stop at that. There are a bunch of other ones around school funding, around creating true alignment of college and career readiness. Discussions around McCleary as well and how that's impacted other districts beyond ours. So lots of this, these type of discussions going on.
You go next?
Sure. Is this live? Yeah, good. Let's see, saw an interesting presentation by a teacher who, I think spouse, was a consultant for, it's a Dr. Clifford's group, were managing distractions. I forget the name, it was like a book in the eighties or seventies, just talking about managing distractions and how, you know, if you focus on something you're good at or great at and you get coached on it, you can just go to the moon on that. Whereas if you focus on something you're not so good at, you're, you're probably going to get to maybe medium. And so the idea was sometimes we focus a little bit too much on our, on our negatives and not coach to our strengths. And that was interesting and it was talking about his exploration into this managing the strengths and how it impacted him as a teacher, reaching out and how he kind of approaches his class differently. So I thought that was very enlightening. Let's see. And just, I, I recall sitting with a table from, of school district board members from a particular school district with about 20,000 students. They had just found out they had failed their fourth bond in a row. And it was by like one or half of a percentage point. And it looked like the school district was going to have to go year-round in terms of staggering, but the teachers would have to go year-round, the kids would have to kind of go year-round, but it may be six hours per day as opposed to eight hours. And man, you talk about such negative consequences. So thank you to our community for supporting our schools and rebuilding or building a brand-new elementary school. And in a kind of in a way, acknowledgement of what we have here as a community. This community also had 20% to 25% homeless students, which is just heartbreaking. And I appreciate our, Brian, who stepped up for kind of a, what is it, a WASDA leadership position. And I think trying to provide equity amongst all school districts, I think, really resonates after speaking to that school district. But at the same time, recognizing, yes, we want to promote equity, but it doesn't mean that we, our tide has to stay flat. We should be able to continue to move ourselves up. And we should not be apologetic for trying to get our city to support mental health counselors. And if we could succeed in doing that in a semi-permanent, sustainable fashion, wouldn't it be nice to have a presentation by somebody from the city and a school district board director presenting of how they've approached the community and found sustainable funding for mental health? That'd be a wonderful WASDA presentation. And at the, at the meeting, I did speak to our WASDA lobbyist and kind of mentioned, you know, I see this emphasis on mental health. How likely is it we're going to see a mental health counselor in our school? You know, is it next year? No, that's not on the radar. In, in practical speaking, it's way out there, it's five to 10 years at least. So that's just a metric I wanted to share. Thanks.
Just bring it to me. I apologize for stepping out. I had to take a work call, that was important. I, I just want to mention three sessions that were eye-opening to me. The first was in light of our bargaining and, and the challenging aspects of the bargaining for all parties all over the state and specifically for our community. Students, parents, school district, employees, teachers, staff and the board. It was a really, really challenging process and from whatever role we had. And so I went to a session on open bargaining. And the district presented the fact that they went to open bargaining and the main reason was for transparency and communication. And it, it was, I mean, it was eye-opening. I've often been concerned about, you know, most everything we do is transparent, except for like this most important thing where we spend the majority of taxpayers' dollars is for employees, appropriately so, but that's where it goes. So why are we not communicating where, what the positions are more accurately so it can take away some of the confusion and concern? Because I think we all really are, I think what's clear when we get to the end of bargaining is that we all have the same values and goals that all parties do. Obviously, there aren't, there are some negatives as well, but, but I really would love to start having a conversation once we get some, through some other things about if we want to see some changes in, in the way that we do our bargaining, you know, from big to little. And, and it could be as, well, it's pretty significant, but as small as reporting just very fact-based proposals from both sides at the end of bargaining days. And that that's posted on wherever it is. And so that provides the community, the community transparency as to what is actually happening. And people now have, people don't have to guess or make things up or be incorrect. And facts without any judgment or opinions, knowing that it's not the ending point because there's not yet an agreement. And that's, you know, and, and yet there might be. And that's, you know, and yet, there might be, they've had really great success with the full open bargaining, where people can go and observe, just like we do our meetings, and it's going and observing, not participating, but observing and being able to watch the So that's a topic I'd like to kind of put on the, what do we call it, parking lot. I also attended the resilience talk that Tracy already talked about, so I'm not going to go into it more, but what fascinated me is the ability to, that we all can learn to improve our resiliency. And, you know, it's always fascinated me that, you know, you put two people having the same experience, and the reaction is so different. And, you know, really, I think so much of our students' challenges comes down to their resiliency, and if we can help them with that, it's just helping their success for everything. You know, anxiety is, in a large way, additional resilience can resolve a lot of anxiety issues. And so we talk about anxiety, our students with anxiety, our parents with anxiety all the time, and this is one way that we really could do something. The final comment is, I also went to a legislative update, and I was really optimistic before I went to it about hoping that the legislature would be making some additional improvements to McCleary and/or to the new funding model and tax structure so that we can adequately fund all of the services that we need in the state. And it just doesn't look as promising, at least short-term, as I was hoping. So, in a way, that made me sad, because I'm ready for some changes, but I also kind of realized that, you know, if we want to see some things happen, we need to do it at the local level. We can't wait for the state to come in and fix our problems. We have to do it. So, let's do it.
And that will be good to bring up when we have our December 13th linkage session with our, at least two of our legislators. Thank you. Okay. And everybody ready to move on to our Board Policy 2020, Values, Mission, and Vision? So we have some documents attached, a summary of some prior meeting minutes, as well as a summary of the values from the last session on October 25th. And Donna, did you want to start with any comments? Oh, sorry.
We tried to summarize the strategic planning sessions in the document that's attached, and I do have some paper copies here if anyone wants to take a look at those. We also did, you can see posted behind you, the actual chart paper notes. We don't go all the way back to the very first sessions, but the more recent ones when we've been specifically talking about Board Policy 2020, we have here as well. And then we took the very last chart that was the discussion around the values, and thank goodness for Kendall, she took it and put it into a little bit of a easier to read than the moment-by-moment, what does it look like on the chart? So those are there just to remind everyone where we were at over our discussions, and we did spend a fair amount of time in discussing the values as they are outlined in the Board Policy. And a lot of discussion around when we say, what do we value specifically currently? It outlines it as in classrooms, but we started to have a, pull out some discussion around what do we value for our students. Also some conversation around where do we want a Mercer Island student to be when they graduate from our system, which then starts to circle around into mission and vision as well. And we are ready for more charting, and we've remembered to date it this time, too, because we had this conversation about which came first. So I think we got a lot of the way through the values, but not all of them at the last meeting. I know Tracy, you were unable to be at the last meeting, but we did have a fair amount of conversation, but we also did have to end the session before. I think, Brian, you were kind of working through some of the thought process that you were having as you looked at the values as they are currently stated.
Well, I would be curious, Tracy, if you had anything to build upon from our last meeting, or how you think that went, or?
Thank you. I thought you did a great job. I liked how you started to kind of divide things into the individual versus the classroom, which is not just the classroom, but the whole learning environment. I liked how the Cs kept coming up, however many there are, and I think the challenge is just starting to filter those into mission and vision eventually. But I think there's great things. I didn't really have anything to add. I do really like the idea of having something short, like we educate children, our students, and yet it's hard to distill everything down to something very short, but it'd be nice to have at least one of them, like the mission or the vision, be really short. I think there was a, we were at the New Family Social Event at Islander Middle School, and I think at the, and I'm looking to Fred, because I think you were standing near it, there's a banner we had up, and I think it said, "Inspiring Students," or something like that. Do you know what I'm talking about? It's like a standing flag.
It's one of our banners.
Do you remember what the exact wording was on it? I thought, now there's a short, brilliant phrase.
I don't recall the exact statement, but it's something like inspiring young minds to go forth.
Yeah, it's really short and really wonderful.
It's about, I think it's six sentences. Rosie and I worked on that.
Six words, yeah.
Sorry, six words.
Yeah, so something like that, I think, would be really good to have as our catchphrase. And then I also really like the Bainbridge Island School Districts. They have like a table kind of colorful chart on their website that has their mission, vision, and guiding principles, and their mission and vision are in bullet points. And so I really like those, that idea of having it be really easily presented concise. And while we seem to have a lot of words that kind of come and go as trends, trying to have more timeless words, if we can.
So I was looking at the individual column, and I'm just wondering if it's missing something about academics in terms of academically prepared. I see high expectation, rigor, challenge, and that translates to citizenship and civic-mindedness, but where's that academic education showing in that column? I'm just wondering.
It's like we take it for granted.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I hear you. I don't disagree with you at all. I think it's, in terms of inspiring, for the individual, it's inspiring that desire to learn.
I like that, lifelong learner, but I also want them to learn something, too. So as opposed to just, I want to learn. So, you know, we've talked about lifelong learner regardless if they're going off to two-year college, four-year college, or off to contribute in the workforce right away. But we have what, ninety, what's, how many are going on to higher education?
It's about 94, 95%.
I wonder if there should be a statement in there in terms of just preparing them to succeed academically in their higher ed pursuits and/or other pursuits, and I don't want to give those other pursuits short shrift them either, but I'm just, yeah. Recognizing, yes, that's, is obvious, but it's kind of missing a little bit.
I mean, I don't think you actually need to couch it in terms of, I mean, if you're looking to add something about academic excellence for the individual, it's about them needing their potential. And the future is a separate issue in terms of what path they take, but I think that's where you're going. So I think if we're talking about academic excellence.
I like that.
It's that, yeah, I mean, it's that each student is achieving their best.
Their potential, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I might encourage us to think of it, you know, more in a growth mindset manner of academic growth as opposed to academic excellence. I think the word excellence starts to add that pressure again, that anxiety, what is excellence? And is every child going to achieve? And who judges that? So if we want to encourage lifelong learners and that constant growth mindset where they're constantly growing academically, I still grow academically. Thanks, Google and YouTube.
Is this product placement?
Yeah.
Okay.
My excellence was without judgment. That's what I appreciate.
Yeah, the academic excellence, I think, is interesting. If you think about the different pathways people want to follow, certainly a college pathway is different than a career pathway, and some of the talks at WASDA I know had very interesting ways of people learning math by taking, doing, on the job internship and, you know, incorporating their math skills and learnings into that. So that's a different form. I don't know how you, it's becoming a lifelong learner, for sure, and learning in the contact, in every context. And that's a little bit different than academic excellence, where people might equate excellence with AP courses or honors courses.
Or a finished line.
Yeah, yeah.
I think some words that are coming to mind as you've been speaking about the academics and making sure that we still have rigor, I think because rigor can be very depending on what it is that you're learning and studying. I think relevance seems like it's something that is very pertinent for our students, depending on what pathway they're going, but frequently that's, what engages them to learn is they see some relevance for something that they're passionate about as well. So those might be some words that...
Yeah, I like relevance. It's usually my question whenever I see a young person who's come back from college. So, how did high school prepare you? Another one is, you're working now, how did college prepare you for work? And I seem to get very similar answers, but, so relevance is resonating with me very strongly.
I'm trying to recall where, back over the last year, while doing the strategic planning, we read that one segment on learning data, memorizing data points as opposed to learning to learn, how at one point academic excellence meant that you knew, had memorized all of these rote formulas and the understanding of the biology of a horse, equine, and you could break those components out and repeat them, whereas now we have all of that knowledge in our pocket typically, in our device. So it's no longer about memorization of academic formulas, although there are certain formulas that you do need to have, but really understanding how to access those data points and how to competently utilize that and know that it's accurate, like recognize false information from true information.
I think that's where the critical thinking comes in and synthesizing your learning as opposed to just the understanding information or memorizing information level. And I know I've mentioned it at least one of these, is there's something called Bloom's Taxonomy that we study in teacher school that talks about those levels and the things in between, like analyzing and comparing.
So what is it when memorization comes out as a result of practice and using something repeatedly and doing projects or, you know, I guess they're finding out people are learning math just by doing an internship and they slowly, and, you know, just repeated use? You start to know all the tips and tricks that you need to do to do your job. And is there, I think that ties into the relevance aspect, it ties into the work aspect of what you're doing. It's interesting, it's project-based, and I don't know how memorization plays into that, but it is a memorization, but it is an outcome.
Right. There was a really good speaker, the first keynote speaker at the WASDA conference, too, that talked about the relevance of, we're not just teaching students 21st century, it's there are things that are going to change so much and all the information we have and the growth of information is exponential. And there was something, some point I was going to make about that and that I'm forgetting now. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was gonna, I appreciate the relevance and the on-the-job math training, but there is something to rigor and to memorization when it comes to math and some other studies that you need to do highly repeated stuff in order to understand those multiplication tables, those division tables. There is a place for memorization and rigor. You're not going to learn, you're not going to learn math on the job if you don't have a good foundation for it. So you might learn higher, much higher level math with a good foundation, but we're not going to be able to skip some of the rigor that's involved in, you know, math grades one through six.
We absolutely know that with our youngest learners, that the building blocks must, the foundation must be laid both in literacy skills and in math skills, and fluency is one of those pieces that we do need to pay attention to, particularly in those early grades, whether it's fluency in literature skills because of repeated practice or in math skills as well.
I'm wondering, David, when you were talking about using those skills where they, you've used them over and over through that process of doing the work, that it comes to you through memorization. And I certainly understand with the memorization of building blocks of mathematics and literacy and those things. I'm wondering, for me, the word that came to mind was mastery. When I work in theater, when we break down that script at the beginning and, you know, a couple weeks later, we emerge as a company and we have it all memorized and we've run it a number of times, and now it is rote, it is memorization that we enter into that stage, that arena, whatever, and we run through those paces with mastery. And I think it's the same with our job skills, when you repeat those things over, instead of just memorizing to be able to regurgitate data points, but the skills you, so maybe academic mastery as opposed to academic excellence, which tends to have a little bit more of a, I don't know, it feels a little more judgmental to me, but being able to go through those pathways of what it is to be academic, the process of being academic, of doing the research, of pulling those papers together, of writing with that style. research, of, of pulling those papers together, of writing with that style to inform in all those paces. And through that rigor and repetition of the practice of, of the practice of academic skills, that we master that, our students master that, and then everything they, they approach in life, they attack with the same, whatever.
Yeah, same desire to master something, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I, I like that. I, you get an intuitive feel for whatever it is you're working on, it's not just Pythagorean's theorem, but you know how it really applies to all these different objects, right? Yeah, I, I think that's great.
Or decide to learn a dance with your wife for an anniversary.
Yes.
Attack that with academic mastery in mind. You'll get the chance to.
No, that's memorization for me.
I, I appreciate that too. I think it, mastery implies you're building a foundation, a solid foundation to go to the next learning step. And regardless of what you're learning, if you haven't mastered it, it's going to be very difficult to build upon that, so appreciate that.
I'm not, I mean, I think, I, I don't think this one. I think, you know, I think, it's fascinating that, that as we're talking about this right now, we're all kind of jumping to our strength and where we found our passion for learning. And I think being able to somehow articulate that is, is what you're going for. I mean, you know, for another example, for me, in terms of the legal field, you know, I mean, everyone's like, law school doesn't teach you how to be a lawyer, law school teaches you the law, and then you learn how to apply the law. And, you know, so the first, the first two years at least of the three years is, is learning the legal, the foundations of law. And then as we get out in externships and clinics and actually representing clients, learning how to apply that law. We should be doing the same thing for our students. They, they get those foundations and then they're applying that learning. High school is, to me, and college frankly, both are, are opportunities to help our students learn how to think and apply their knowledge and come up with creative solutions to, you problem solving and if there's some way that we can put that in there, I think, but I, I mean, so whether it's, I mean, I think it's undermining it to say something like foundational learning. I don't, I mean, but I, but I think that's the concept is that, you know, we have high expectations, but we have high expectations for foundational learning so that our students can continue to achieve the rest. I don't want to undermine the importance of that by saying it in not a strong enough way.
You're not applying, stopping at the foundation and continuing.
No, I'm talking about how important the foundation is and that, that individuals, our individual students need to develop their foundation, but not that that foundation is a low-level foundation. We want them to achieve as high a foundation as they can.
Have we covered now all of the existing values in the current 2020?
Spherical global world.
I think we've, we've, we've talked about them a lot, but I think it's also important to acknowledge that we have, in an attempt to cover everything and not having been there, I can just read it and, you know, make an assumption that there were, there was a real concern to make sure that everything was addressed. So even when you look at the values, you still see things like technological fluency as being something that's valued within the student-centered classrooms. Personalized learning, which then is embedded in the foundation. So it's that how much do you want to repeat things versus have some standalone pieces and the supportive fundamentals or priorities that are, that support that overarching umbrella?
If I might introduce something, again, I brought this back from the Orton School District, is that right? Which is a small school district, but again, they really focused on narrowing it down to very specific language, which I appreciated. So their work is career, life, college, ready. So their mission, all students ready for college, careers, life. And then they expand on that a little bit more in each one of those things. They say our goals, and they bring everything into threes. Our goals are, or they bring it from their mission into their culture, central services, principals, teachers, of how it's done, and then their goals are...
And inside of that is, and students?
And students.
Don't forget that.
Everything, yes, everything's wrapped around students, which brought me back to, that was another piece of governance that we, we talked about early on in this process is the students being central to everything. And then powerful teaching and learning, effective district operations, and collaboration communication in and out of this district. And then how everything in their district aligns from that down. And they're still in the process of, of doing this, but everything falls under these three things, college, career, life. And then no matter what they do, no matter where they break it out, whether it's in their culture, their goals, it all relates back to college, careers, life. This is their, what do we do? And so, I don't know, if you get a chance to look at their website, it was interesting, but I loved how straightforward and simple it was for them. And it seemed to add a lot of clarity. So whether you were in the classroom, you were a parent volunteer, no matter what it was, and you said, what are we doing here? Well, we're preparing our students for college, career, and life. Well, how does this fit in? Well, they would know how that piece fits in as it works from the classroom level on up. Where, where are you serving your students in these areas here? I love the simplicity of that. Also, at the same time though, as was pointed out, they're a small community and school district, and so they can be really fine-tuned and, and straightforward, I think, with that. Or they have a, an easier opportunity to do that, yeah. This would be nearly impossible, I would think, in Seattle Public Schools with it being as huge and massive an operation as it is. We're closer to the Orton side of the scale, and so a little bit more doable for us, but, yeah.
One of the, just to reflect back a little bit, was, so one of the sessions that I went to was centered around student voice, and it was done by North Thurston, which is a relatively large district, does have a demographic that isn't that similar to us, but again, have worked to create a mission and a vision statement that are pretty concise and then built goals underneath that. In fact, their mission is committed to excellence. So when you're talking about, is that excellence in academics, excellence in characters, and a simple vision of all students empowered and future-ready. So it's that, that future-ready piece as well, preparing our students for rewarding careers, fulfilling lives, and compassionate global citizenship. So what are those key things that we want everyone who we meet within the organization to really, and our students as well, to say, this is what the Mercer Island School District is about, this is what we're, this is who we are. And I think excellence has to be in there because that's, that is a really important component for Mercer Island School District is that excellence has always been a big piece of who they, who we are.
It is, I brought it up, but there was some discussion about adding to the anxiety.
True.
So I don't want to dismiss that either.
Notice I didn't say academic excellence.
Okay.
I just said excellence.
One of the phrases I like that I think conveys that, for, for each and every student is personal success. That that can, because that means something different to every person. Some of the phrasing too that I thought about wanting to include, and it's sort of in here in different ways, but engaging and inspiring students to think critically, solve problems creatively, and work collaboratively.
Is that what the classroom does, or is that on the individual side, or is that separate from this?
I think just maybe, maybe separate from this, but, or it could be, it's individual and classroom in a way, so maybe it is separate. Because thinking critically is a, it's not necessarily something you do in a vacuum. Problem-solving can be individual or group. And then working collaboratively is more classroom, but I guess there's individual skills involved. Maybe I'm being too narrow in my thinking of what you're talking about with individual Just in our superintendent's teaching and learning committee that we did the other day when we had some of those values, Fred, that you had on the back of that page is thinking about some of those too.
I kind of enjoyed, I just wrote down thinking, working, solving. Like if you just bring that down. Who, who are our students? Who, who are we raising in our district? We're raising individuals who are thinking, they're working, and they're solving. Or thinking, collaborating, solving. If you're just narrowing that down. I enjoyed, I heard the word earlier, empower. One of my favorite words that kind of fits along with there is innoble. That's a little lofty. But I, I love the, the thought that we are empowering our students, especially when we think so much about student voice and how many students are really moving the needle in the world right now in public speaking and, and engaging the world around them through development of apps and, and, you know, from young ages are really changing the world. So the thought that one of our values would be to empower our students is interesting to me.
Is that a citizenship goal? Is that, it could also be a leadership goal too, to empower. We've got individual value around leadership with apply and practice. And empower could potentially, is that a classroom competency to, to set up an environment where, where, you know, students can feel empowered to kind of take education by the horns and, and run with it?
I see that more on the classroom environment side of the thing that, yeah.
Yeah. You know, we've got high expectations, rigor, challenging, potential, empowering. I think that speaks again to the relevance a little bit too, because you, you control your destiny.
This is more of a procedural comment. I just, you know, I think we're, I'm hearing a lot of, and it's my opinion too, but very, very simple, direct, and to-the-point vision and mission. And then, you know, if we want to go into further detail, we can do it kind of separately as a goal section or as a priority section where we talk about, and I'll go back to the Cs again, but you know, that's where, that's where those items can go where we're really talking about them specifically. But, you know, mission and vision, I mean, we, we, at least many of us seem to keep kind of going back to like brief and to the point, and, and that's okay. I mean, there's, you don't have to say, you don't need every word in it for it to be meaningful. And...
And we can elaborate on page two.
Exactly.
That's what I liked about the Bainbridge Island did. They had it distilled and then they had all the detail below.
And Orton kind of does that with theirs.
Does North Thurston.
Okay, so, I mean, if we're gonna do that, I would, I, I mean, I just, I just think that would be a great direction to go in.
Start with the more, the simple...
Very, very simple.
Direct statements and then move into the broader.
And what, yeah, and then what Bainbridge also does is, I, I know we, at some point we had talked about like what is a mission versus that, how is it different from a vision? The way they do it is, mission is what the, making, what, what is, I mean, our mission as a learning organization is to ensure that every student is blah, blah, blah.
So what's our why?
Yeah, and then the vision is what the district's going to provide.
The how.
The how, yeah. So, I mean, I, yeah.
And Orton broke it down very much that way as well.
So I don't know if any of you have the current board policy 2020 open. You know, the, the header, which isn't really labeled anything as a vision or a mission, starts with successfully preparing students for the cognitive, global, and digital world. Then the vision reads, our students will thrive in the cognitive, global, and digital world while sustaining their passion and inspiration for learning. Historically, that did not change a lot from the time it was originally put into place, which is about 10 years ago. The mission expands a little bit. Mercer Island Schools will deliver a 21st-century education that prepares students to convert information into knowledge and create innovative solutions demanded for, I'm sorry, demanded by tomorrow's world.
Does that seem flipped from the what and the how that we just talked about? Aren't we saying that the mission is the what do we do and then the vision is how do we do it?
I think it can actually go either way.
Right, that's why I think we're wondering, which one are we?
Which is the what and, and how are you going to get there?
And for me, what's missing there is the why. So why are we doing it? Why is it important to our students that we do these things?
So does that circle back around to your values? What do you value?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Their vision is to become a... Their vision is to become a national model of educational excellence.
Those are nice. I would feel like, I like that we educate children, but to add on to it, I feel like there needs to be a little bit more there, like we educate children to be amazing young adults or something. Broad and yet brief.
I was just looking if we looked at just the title of 2020 and removed the flowery language and just said preparing students for the world.
Oh, that's nice, too.
What do we do? We prepare students for the world.
Well, and I was looking at that, looking at our vision 2020, yeah, kind of blending that with Orton, so.
Microphone?
Blending our vision 2020 with Orton's, where our students will thrive in their careers, you know, in college, in their careers, and in life, while sustaining their passion and inspiration for learning. Just kind of delete the cognitive, digital, and global world.
I'm not even sure we knew the end of that. I mean, I was actually thinking the same thing, and just, what was the beginning that you just said?
Well, I think it was recognizing, you know, that we want them to thrive in maybe those three Orton areas. But then also the last is that lifelong learner approach too, so.
But that could also go somewhere else.
Yep. That was in a goal.
Right, I was actually thinking the same thing in terms of what Orton's.
Yeah, I also had some notes where I just, we prepare students for what's ahead. And that couldn't, we could add, it including, includes higher education and career, global and civic engagement, and ongoing social and emotional health. But then it gets too wordy.
We could take the superhero approach and say, prepare our students to save the world.
I don't, I like that.
Tracy, I shared with you via email the tagline if you want it.
Oh, thank you.
But I don't wanna disrupt.
Oh, that's, I, you're, got it. Thank you. I do. It's preparing students to thrive, inspiring students to create their future.
Where is this from?
This is HR.
That's on the HR banner. We purchased some banners for recruitment.
Excellent.
Right?
But the nice thing is if we go with that, it's already printed.
We've already got the banners.
So practical.
But you're conscious and green.
We're problem solved.
Can you say it again, so Fred can write it down?
I was just gonna say that we're working collaboratively to problem solve and think critically about this. Preparing students to thrive, inspiring students to create their future. And those are two different taglines that she says they use alone or together.
And I remember, we were at the new families event, and we looked across the, this space.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
And that's what we saw there, and it was like, and you said, well, there it is right there.
Yeah, I said, we've already got a banner.
Yeah, Rosie, the director of human resources and I worked on that because we wanted some banners that were a little more quote punchy. But it was also in collaboration with what we heard from the learning services team. So we sought input to try to, when we were developing sort of the HR mission and what we were trying to do, it was important to us to understand what the district, or what we felt we were doing in learning services when we work with students. So I can't take credit for it, nor can Rosie. It's really sort of a conglomerate, conglomeration of what we heard from the learning services team, which is our principals and our instructional staff.
Excellent. I like how it.
Collaborative effort, in other words.
Yeah.
And already input from the learning staff.
Yes, yes.
And then goals, we can really kind of get into the meat of it.
I will add that a key thing, at least when we were getting feedback, was that it's not creating for their future. What we heard was it was their future, meaning whatever that is to that child.
Yeah, I like that a lot.
I will tell you a simple mission from a previous district that I worked in, that I worked on with them, was preparing our students for their future, because we know that their future is going to look very different than.
Ours.
And even adding preparing students to thrive in their future. I mean.
I think that preparing has sort of a future look to it. It's now, I think preparing implies the near future and the far future.
Yeah, and I, I like inspiring. To me, it's like, should there be a comma somewhere or an and?
With two separate statements.
Two separate statements. So I think just making it, combining it to make one statement, however we might want to do that.
I kind of like it as too. I did just remember the thing from that keynote speaker that I wanted to point out, is that he said, we're not preparing students for tomorrow, we're preparing them for the day after tomorrow, and the day after that, and the day after that.
And the day after that, and the day after that.
There was a. A visual ellipsis. Okay, I think we're done. On a serious note though, but not that we're necessarily done tonight, but one of the things I would like to do tonight is talk about next, the next time we will talk about this, which will be at our January special session that's formerly known as a retreat, that will be on.
January 15th?
January 15th, yeah. Should be on all our calendars. And that's a.
Tuesday, I believe.
And it's a morning to the afternoon session. I think we plan on it being, oh, we have a linkage at 7:30 in the morning with Rotary and Chamber boards. And then we start our study session at nine, and we probably, we want to go till two or
We've previously scheduled from nine till two for that full day.
so.
And we already do have the morning part blocked out for facilities planning because the board moved that to that meeting.
Right, yeah.
To have that conversation about facilities master planning. So that will take up a good chunk between nine and.
Eleven.
Almost eleven. And then that gives some time for the latter part to work some more on the strategic planning.
Yeah.
So this is a superintendent-led exercise that we're doing right now. Is it, are your intentions to crowdsource this at some point, to do a little write-up?
Microphone?
Sorry. Recognizing this is a superintendent kind of led effort, is there a thought about crowdsourcing this amongst the community, teachers, students?
I think as soon as we have something that summarizes the work in a brief statement with perhaps, here's the board's thoughts on a vision and a mission, whether it's concise or whatever that looks like, and then starting with the leadership team, and, because I've been walking them through this all along, the board is working on the strategic planning, we're working on 2020, we're looking at the different elements of it, starting with leadership, and then utilizing the existing groups that we already have in place to gain input from. And then at some point when we've gathered that input to go out in a broader sense, but again, you don't just want to go out with everything, here's, here's the concepts we're thinking of, have the community then weigh in either through an electronic process or a thought exchange tool.
I don't think we definitely need to have the goals or whatever we're gonna do, I mean drafts. Draft up the goals along with the mission and vision, because otherwise we're kind of in this little vacuum without a ton of concrete. I mean, even just some of the things that we bear, that we, you know, kind of, these are the ideas of what the type of goals are going to be.
So remember, we still have our fundamentals that we are utilizing for our monitoring, which the interpretations are coming forward. We've done one, three will come up in January. We've already began working on that in the draft form for the board. Then we'll work on seven this year, and then we'll work on the other fundamentals next year. As I'm working on them and I'm reading the fundamental, I'll be honest, there are times when I think, oh, is the, is the board going to want to have a discussion on this specific language within the fundamental as well as the interpretation? Does it still serve the purpose that was intended? So I would just caution on adding on goals along with the fundamentals, because it does become which pathway are we on?
What I was thinking is that the goals take the place of fundamentals. I was not thinking that we have all of it when I said that.
Okay. You heard my concern.
What?
I understand.
We can call them the fundamentals.
We could change the name of the fundamentals to a different title, certainly. Because if these statements within the fundamentals, I think when you look through them, they do address many of the concerns or values that you continue to come back to. Academic rigor is certainly addressed here, and how to monitor that. So we certainly have the opportunity to look at them and see if they still say what we want them to say. We could certainly still call them fundamentals, or if that, if it doesn't feel right, we can always change that.
Yeah, I think we had, we had talked about this when we started this effort, that we were going to preserve the fundamentals, we were going to preserve our, the continuity on reviewing the fundamentals. And, you know, as you change the interpretation or update the interpretation, if there's language in the fundamentals, in a fundamental, let's kind of scope it a little bit, that needs correction or updating or clarification, I think we were certainly open to that. I, I don't think there's any need right now, you know, let's, let's fix mission and vision, preserve the fundamentals as they are. Once we tackle the first two, we can come back maybe if we feel we've got the wherewithal and the fortitude to go through with that. But, yeah, I think we were good with preserving the fundamentals as they are, so let's, we can keep on course as that parallel effort that you've already got. I did notice on that January date, we do have a linkage at 7:30?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's, that's a long day, okay.
It's a long day.
Well, that's why we're ending at two and not three or four.
I initially had it at, we ended at 12, that's why I was.
But then we added on the facilities thing, and so we didn't want to, yeah.
I see, okay, that's, that's the change. All right. All right.
So while we're brainstorming on classroom and individual, throw out an outlier here. We've talked about internships, externships, we've talked about that and relevancy. And I've mentioned before, just this amazing community that we live in, and all these amazing professionals. Do we want to live into the classroom, or can we talk about experiential learning opportunities for our students? You know, there's, there are some school, high schools that encourage your students to go out and get internships. It doesn't necessarily have to be an internship, it could be a summer type of thing, and it might not necessarily be appropriate for the school district, it could be a foundation type of thing.
Well, I like you bringing that up. I think it fits into the personalized learning fundamental as an option that we don't necessarily need to spell out in this context.
I think maybe we should probably also update that instead of saying classroom, we do say learning environment, I think as you, you highlighted again earlier, Tracy, I think we say it up at the top in, underneath general, learning environments across district, not just in classrooms.
Yeah, I think using learning environment is a great idea.
And maybe just update that.
That way it's not exclusive to, in our buildings.
Because the current, sorry, Tracy.
Go ahead.
The current statement under values is student-centered classrooms where students and staff exhibit, and then it had all of the listing of a variety of things. So I think there's absolutely the opportunity to change that sentence or that idea.
Well, and even with an eye to technology, and we're standing on the precipice, I mean, we, we're, it's here now, is augmented in virtual reality. I mean, our, our classroom environments are now in little headsets as well, where we can, we can virtually travel the world with our classroom and place that classroom wherever we want, if we have the technology in the classroom to do that, but with augmented reality. So, yeah, classroom is a very fluid term now, thanks to the technology.
The other one I'd also think we should at some point think about is, as Light Rail is, comes here, you know, we've suddenly got super easy access to Bellevue College for a set of programs, as well as to the UW for another set of programs. And, you know, I think in five years, that would be a super interesting thing to take advantage of.
I don't know if Light Rail's going to Dot PC, is it?
That's a good question.
I don't think it is. It does go to UW, though.
Goes in kind of that direction, but if, if it's not, you know, if we miss it by a lot, that would be a problem.
I think it still requires a transfer.
Oh, okay.
But, but a good point.
We are involved in the Wannick Consortium, which allows our students within CTE realm to attend classes that are specific in their interest or passion that we may not have at Mercer Island School District. They're at a variety places, mainly on the east side. Fred, help me out, give me one of the Lake Washington Institute of Technology, is a place where our students can go for.
Well, Wannick is housed on that campus, so a number of CTE offerings as well, I mean, there's lots of different opportunities.
I think transportation though has been raised as an issue, and then, you know, kind of the speed at which you get there, and then you want to make it effective if it's taking you half an hour to 45 minutes to get there, and you only spend an hour there, and then you're coming back.
Usually two hours.
Okay.
The Wannick courses are, like, there's one at Newport High School, it's culinary arts.
And the, another issue, another issue that has come up against this, and a number of districts, we're all talking about it, is the move to 24 credits, while well-intentioned by the legislature in terms of that, has impacted this, because we used to have the ability, even with our course that we offered as part of the consortium that Jen McClellan teaches with the entrepreneurship class, that went from being a three-credit class to a two-credit class to a one-credit class. And it's largely because students can't afford to sink three credits into one CTE course that eats up all those electives when you have to complete 24 to graduate. And when they added that, this is a negative consequence of that Core 24 that they went to. And I think we all see that the idea behind it was obviously to get students more opportunities and more credits and more preparation for college. And it was where college was the outcome and the driver. And now that we're spinning back to, no, wait a second, maybe we missed the mark, I wonder if we're gonna see a switchback from that Core 24, but that has impacted those credits that we used to have kids take. So when they drive clear up there, it made sense to bus them up there or drive up there when they'd get three credits. Kids don't want to give up that much opportunity.
Even in our district where we have seven period days.
Yes.
That they could include, so it's gonna hurt other districts even more if they don't have that, yeah.
Thank you for sharing that story. That'll be really important when we discuss, talk with our legislators on the 13th and then visit them on the Hill on February. Something else in there that, I think it's unspoken, so it certainly exists in there under citizenship and under cultural competency and global perspective and all that, but fostering an understanding of the importance of relationships. and under cultural competency and global perspective and all that, but fostering, um, an understanding of the importance of relationships. Um, we're already using the term fostering up there, um, but I'm not sure where that falls in. I see a lot for leadership, is there, how to be a leader, but also it's really important to develop relationships. Um, and some of those relationships that we develop at a young age can stick with us for a long time, but also the understanding of the soft skills that come with that interconnectedness and the friendships that we develop. So it falls within cultural competency, it falls within social, emotional skills, it.
Falls under the character.
Character.
Definition that's here, the empathy and the confidence, social, emotional skills.
Yeah. It's in there, and I'm wondering if.
Well, and it's, well, also falls under citizenship. I mean.
But when we talk a lot about interconnecting, when we think of school climate, and so much is talking about building these relationships and that interconnectedness of our students and students to adults, and, and how we see each other. And we're active bystanders, and so much of our language involves relationships. I wonder if there's an opportunity to call that specific word forward in an intentional way.
You can overrevere that we're fostering the relationships here.
Fostering relationships, yeah. I don't know. As a part of our environment, it's, because it's a really intentional thing, and if it's, you're not intentional about that, it can easily get lost. So I know it's there, and when we see our group tables together, where students are working on projects together, these are all building those relationships. But it's those relationships that are going to hopefully work with them as they move into their lives and they thrive in their lives. It's, relationship building is a major component to that. And that's something that's lacking, I think, with a lot of our graduates and young people who are struggling in the world right now. Is that somehow they miss that relationship piece.
That's what I liked about Bainbridge, is they have a mission, vision, and then these brief guiding principles. And one of them is strong minds, challenging and meaningful curriculum, high expectations and quality instruction. So that's where they've got the academics. And then they have strong hearts, and this, the challenges, the first one is challenge, strong minds. This one is connection, strong hearts, interconnected learning experiences, personalization, and individual attention. And then they also have community, strong community, student engagement, leadership, caring and supportive environment. And I feel like they, they found a way to pull in that, um, connectivity between people, the relationships part of it.
I think there's that understanding, too, because we have leadership in there, that leadership isn't just, um, taking control and, and telling people what to do. Leadership really is inspiring people to step forward and, and pull in, uh, leadership, in that sense of building relationships through leadership is, it's pretty important.
Fostering. So, um, that being said about the 2:00 PM on the future special session, doesn't mean we have to go till 2:00 PM. Like, tonight, we're scheduled till 8:00 PM. If we feel like we've sort of run through, we can end a little early if we'd like.
So do we, do we know what we want to accomplish for next time?
One thing I thought of, um, it sounded like a lot of people were enthusiastic about the, um, statement we got from Director Badersby about, um, preparing students to thrive, inspiring students to create their future. Um, one thing I'd like to see is have people mull that over, over the next couple, few weeks, um, as a potential mission.
Yes.
Yes, we can do that.
Absolutely.
Um, any, whether you like it, or as is, or what you'd, changes you would make, or if you'd want to completely start over, uh, or if you have other ideas. And then, um, so that would answer our question, what do we do? And then a vision, how do we do it? Maybe have people kind of work on, since we've got all of this.
We've got some building blocks here.
We've got lots of building blocks. Maybe everybody could try to take a stab at a vision, and then we could all bring that together at the next session, was one way to do it. Does that sound?
I think so.
I'm seeing some.
Yeah, I think that sounds, that sounds good. So if we get a write-up that includes these statements as well as the instructions.
So further develop these notes, like we got tonight in our packet.
We will add, um, notes from today, that will be certainly taken from the charts and the conversation. And we'll, um, highlight the, um, statement that, um, Erin provided, so you can all see that as well. And, um, the other thing we, I can do is link for you to a few of the other pieces that were referenced, the ordering, the Bainbridge, so you can kind of look at those examples as well. Um, and then the task to be reviewing that vision, and, um, perhaps, um, what I'll also do is attach the 2020, so you can look at the current mission and see how does that need to be evolved.
Okay. Yeah, perfect. I think that'd be, that'd be great. Is there anything else?
President Drucke, just for clarification, I heard you say.
Yes.
The what on the mission, but earlier we called that the why. Which did you want?
Oh, right.
Is that the why, and then this is the what and how? I just want to capture it.
Yeah, I think we said why, but we also said what.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for me, the why, it's like, well, because we have to. I mean, like, why doesn't, isn't a helpful question for me? Do others, people feel that way? The what is, what did we do?
The what and the how.
The what and the how, I think is more important. The why is, we're, this is our job.
We know.
We know we need to do this. Um, it isn't a question of why.
For me, I think the why, uh, falls into research. Um, research-based information, studies, the, the things that inform us, the qualitative and quantitative data that guides the how. So we've, this is what we do, um, and this is how we do it, and this is why we do it that way. This is why that's important.
So if it's.
Yeah.
If it's helpful for you to ask the question, why, then please do that. But answer it, regardless of the question.
Answer the what and the how.
So this is all in preparation for a meeting on.
January fifteenth.
Okay. So, any other comments or questions before we adjourn? And I don't think we need a motion to adjourn, since it's a special session, we just have done the, I called to order, and we can adjourn. Okay. So, thank you all very much for a very productive session, and if you're being willing to end early, it's just nice.